Stanford congratulations, please. Congratulations to the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the name of a justice for all.
Mr. Reinfeld, I just need to read a quick statement if I may. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Cliffsside Park Board of Ed has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the offices of the Board of Ed, the offices of school number three, four, five, six, and the high school on September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, and notices were forwarded to reporters of the record, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. This is an official meeting. I'd like to take the roll if I may. Mrs. Abreu?
Here.
Mr. Capano? Mrs. Fredo?
Here.
Mr. Garcia?
Here.
Mr. Nidru?
Here.
Dr. Pamcleano? Mr. Rincourt?
There.
Mr. Russo? Ms. Terabaki?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Rogers?
All right, thank you, Mr. Alfano. Thank you, Board of Ed members, for attending tonight's meeting. We have quite a crowd with us here tonight, something that we love to see at our Board of Ed meetings, but tonight, I think, is a little bit different than some of the previous meetings. We have a lot of our highest achieving students here with us this evening, and we would like to recognize you for the achievements that you had on last year's NJSLA state assessment. We have nineteen students who earned perfect scores on math, ELA, and science tests, so we would like to honor you with a small award and just show our appreciation for the hard work that you put in all throughout the school year. So I'm going to come down. I'll ask Mr. Terabaki to come down as well, and I'm going to call up the building principals to introduce the students who earned the award. All right, so from school three, we have three students. We have Said Mansori, Mustafa Kandar, and Wilfred Chokhun. And introducing these two students, our school three principal, Mrs. Barbara Barco.
Good evening, everyone. I don't know if we want to have the students come up here. I would love to have them stand here. This year, I asked their teachers from last year that taught them to write a little something about them and what kind of a student they were. So I'll start with, we said Said, but we call him Amareli. Amareli?
Amareli.
So Amareli's teacher from last year was Mrs. Kat Meyer, and she's in the audience honoring you tonight. Amareli had a perfect score on math, and congratulations to Amareli for achieving a perfect score on the NJSLA math test. I knew he would. He always paid attention, stayed focused, and consistently strived to do his very best. He was an excellent student who not only worked hard, but always wanted to help his classmates. We are so proud of his dedication and kindness and wish him continued success in all that he does. Love and his gratitude. Mustafa, stay up here, Amareli, because I'm going to take pictures. You could just stand over here, and I'll take for Mustafa. You're welcome. Congratulations. Mustafa was in Ms. Chung's class. She's here tonight. She was coming as well.
I'm here, boss.
Oh, there she is. Ms. Chung said, "Mustafa is a student I always counted on to participate in class, always had his hand up, and demonstrated an interest for learning and questioning. He loved to talk." Is that true? He loved to talk, sometimes too much, but we liked that. He always got anxious when the word "test" came up, and I would often say, "Regardless of the score, if you tried your best, then that's a great job." He never hesitated to ask questions if unsure and always gave it his all in everything he did, so congratulations. And Wilfred, there he is, also in Ms. Chung's class. Congratulations, Ms. Chung. Wilfred, another student who always had his hand up and was always participating. He demonstrated an interest for learning by always wanting to share his prior knowledge about topics presented. He was a student who used all his time given on any test he takes. If I gave him forty minutes on a test, Wilfred would use all forty minutes. He would check and recheck and recheck his work until I would say, "Time is up." Always worked hard and gave it his best in everything he did. Congratulations to the parents, because you get, you're part of this as well, and the teachers, always, all the teachers, not only last year, but this year and the years prior. And achieving a perfect score on the NJSLA math test is an outstanding accomplishment. I am so proud of all three of these boys. Well, go outside afterwards and take pictures with them.
All right, so for school four, we have a number of students, the first of which, I don't know if this is a first, but this is a student who received a perfect score in math and ELA, so on both assessments. We have Jin Su Jang. Mateo Tamborini for math. Ashton Antonio Marcos for ELA. Jayden Ku for ELA. And Dario Losch for ELA. And introducing these students is Mrs. Russos, the principal of school four.
Any school four teachers who are here tonight, if you can please come up and join me while I speak about the children, I'd appreciate it. So good evening. It's such a joy to be here tonight to celebrate some truly outstanding students from school number four. These students have achieved perfect scores on their state assessment, a remarkable accomplishment that reflects not only their hard work and perseverance, but also their, the incredible support of families and teachers. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the teachers who are here tonight. Your dedication, encouragement, and daily commitment to excellence makes all the difference. These achievements are a reflection of your hard work as well, so thank you for everything you do for our students and for our school. So now it's my honor to recognize each for our perfect score recipients. Krishna, Krishna didn't earn just one, like Mr. Reinfeld said, but two perfect scores, perfect scores in both ELA and math. That's an incredible accomplishment. Krishna approaches everything she does with focus, curiosity, and a quiet confidence that inspires her classmates. We are so proud of you, Krishna. Jin Su earns a perfect score in ELA, which comes as no surprise to anyone who knows him. He's thoughtful, hardworking, and always eager to learn more. Jin Su, your dedication and positive attitude make such a difference in our school. Congratulations. Mateo, Mateo earned a perfect score in math, showing a real talent for problem solving and logical thinking. Mateo, you always give your best effort and take pride in doing things the right way, and this achievement truly reflects that. Great job, Mateo. everything he does. Dario, you are a leader by example, and this achievement is something to be very proud of. Congratulations. One more big round of applause for all the amazing students here tonight from school four and all the other schools, and for the teachers and families who helped them along the way. You've made school four and our entire community incredibly proud. Congratulations to each of you, and keep reaching for the stars. I'm so proud of you. Congratulations.
All right, from school five, we have Justin Munoz in ELA. Is Justin here?
No.
Can I say a couple words?
Sure, I will.
Introducing Justin, who's not here, is Mrs. Martinotti, our school five principal.
Good evening, everybody. I'm so proud to announce Justin's accomplishments on the test last year.
Is he here? No, they're looking in the back. Sorry, sorry.
That's okay. His teacher last year was Mrs. Orso, so she wrote a little note that I will read. She said she truly enjoyed having Justin as part of her fourth grade class. He was bright and witty, worked well with his peers, and served as a great role model for the rest of school five. Justin always participated thoughtfully in class discussions. He excelled in math and was an excellent writer. He also brought humor to our classroom and made learning enjoyable for everyone, so we're very proud of Justin. And I also want to thank the board for all your support in helping us get the materials and resources that we need that make teaching your kids worthwhile. So thank you, and congrats to Justin. I hope you're safe.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, from school six, we have Zafir Bach in ELA. We have Matt Aron, Metta in math. And introducing these students?
I'm not going to be introducing them.
Okay.
First off, I want to congratulate everyone here, all the kids, all the parents. You deserve just as much credit as anybody else does. I also want to congratulate all the teachers, for all that they've done. Like Mrs. Martinotti said, I want to also thank Mr. Reinfeld, Mrs. Caligis, and the Board of Education, because without your support, we don't have the skills, we don't have the materials, to produce wonderful future leaders like we do here tonight. My faculty knows I'm a horrible speaker, so they both came because they wanted to speak instead of me. They actually know the kids, they were the ones that guided the kids every day in school. So the real important thing is the school and home connection. Without that, we don't have kids like this, so I thank you all for your help, everyone here, and everything that you do for the kids to create this wonderful group here. Mrs. Apecsian?
Thank you, Mr. Varnah. Good evening, everyone. I had the honor of being Zafir's fifth grade teacher for both ELA and social studies last school year. Zafir was an outstanding student who consistently showed commitment to his academics. He could always be counted on to pay close attention during lessons, ask thoughtful questions, provide clear, detailed responses, and always put his best effort into his schoolwork. Due to Zafir's hard work and determination, he earned a perfect score on the ELA portion of the NJSLA. This is such a huge achievement that reflects both his dedication and his passion for learning. Congratulations, Zafir, and you both for great work.
So tell me, Ytharth's not here, but obviously he was a great math student if he got a perfect score. He did an amazing job last year in the sixth grade. Not only did he go above and beyond in the classroom, he clearly worked hard at home as well. When a few students were approached about doing additional enrichment work along with their regular sixth grade curriculum, Ytharth jumped at the chance. Even though it meant additional work, he embraced it and put in a terrific effort. Ytharth also set a great example for his peers. He was always ready to go at the start of class and consistently participated. He's one of those students when nobody else is raising their hand, it's like, oh, there he is, Ytharth, here he goes. He's also a motivator in his small groups. He was always helping others and elevating the class as a whole. It was a pleasure working with Ytharth last year, and expect he will continue to do great things in his future math classes, so.
One of the members.
Just a quick note, I probably have a deal with you. You were wonderful, you took the Will and Lake, and then you made whatever notes I gave you even better than what I had. And he always had a book, and he was always reading, so I was always impressed. And I am so thrilled to have Kiana and Adele in the class right now, and they have an essay that's due tonight that I didn't realize that it would be on the same night, and I'm sure that it is going to be. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, we have three high school students. We have Hannah Jung for ELA, Thomas Beavis for science, and Dyro Davila for science And introducing these students is the high school principal, Mr. Joshua Janut.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. It really is an honor to recognize these two individuals that are standing up here today. A perfect score at the high school level really is an extraordinary achievement, so I'm going to begin with Hannah. In addition to being a very gifted student, she's a straight A student in honors classes, which is also very artistically talented as well. She's a proud member of our art academy. She just recently told me that she has artworks that are still on display in the middle school, and we had a conversation about working on a project at the high school, so her artwork can be on display for years to come. Hannah, you and your family should be very proud of her. I forgot to mention that Hannah received a perfect score on the ELA assessment. Dyro received a, he's a twelfth grader who received a perfect score on the science assessment. Dyro is also an incredibly gifted student. He's a straight A student in both honors and AP classes. He's also extremely well-rounded. He's a member of the track team and bowling team. He was recently recognized by the college board for his performance on the P S A T, and he's now going to be applying to very competitive colleges. I'm sure he's going to be very successful in the years to come. Dyro, congratulations.
All right, so at this time, actually before we dismiss the students and parents, I want to give a big thank you to the principals for coming tonight and showing support for your students, but more so than that, the teachers who showed up, because none of this would be possible without the love, support, the, you know, nurturing that you give to the kids in this room, the kids in this district each and every day. So I think I speak for everyone when I say thank you for everything that you guys do every single day for our community. So with that being said, why don't we have all of the students and parents who won awards go into the hallway, and you can get your pictures taken. If you would like to come back for some refreshments, you're welcome to do so, but if you guys do want to go home, because we probably have homework and, according to Mrs. LaRose, an essay to write, you guys are welcome to do that as well. So if you guys want to stand up and exit to get some pictures taken, feel free to do so in the hallway. Mr. Savastana, are we ready? We're good? Okay. All right, welcome, welcome back, I guess, to part two, probably the boring part of the Board of Ed meeting tonight, since our students have exited and received their awards, well-deserved awards. We do have a few other visitors with us tonight. We have our district administration, we have our supervisors, who work with pre-K students all the way up to high school students in a number of different departments, a number of different subject areas. Some are working with our multilingual students, others are working with our special education students, so we are covering a lot of bases with our supervisory staff. So if we could stand up, introduce yourself to the board with your name, subject, grades, any other information about yourself. Mrs., we'll start with Mrs. Van Fleet. We'll start with Mrs. Van Fleet.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mrs. Van Fleet. I'm Georgia. I'm a high school English supervisor, and I want to tell you that the English department at the high school is very dedicated to our students, very dedicated to supporting and growing close reading and writing. We collaborate constantly through lesson planning, resources, and Renaissance assessments, which extend beyond classroom and direct contribute to the student's success on the NJSLA, the NJGPA, the P SAT, and their SAT, so we're very proud of that. And we put a strong emphasis on college and career readiness. I work closely with teachers to ensure all the seniors have somebody looking at their college essays and they're polished, so that everyone feels, you know, confident about their application. And I also assist seniors in securing significant scholarship funding for college. And I also oversee the completion of the ELA NJ graduation department, which means if kids didn't pass the NJGPA, they have to either do a portfolio or an acuplacer. And usually, that's mostly ML students or special ed students. It's probably over a hundred kids every year, starting in January, that I test and I support that can graduate from our high school, and they all succeed. So my career has spanned over three decades. I began as a classroom teacher at the elementary and middle school levels, right, Miss Fredo? Served in the district for ten years, following that. And I look forward to continuing my support for the staff and for the students. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. I'm Joshua Farah. I'm in my first couple of months as a supervisor of K-3. First, I wanted to thank everybody here, you know, for being supportive of me and, you know, dealing with my bombardment of questions, you know, especially my first few weeks. And I'm just very grateful to be, you know, for this position. And just do what I can, put my experience in the classroom to work, and, you know, hopefully, considering it helps to benefit the students of our district. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Margarita Clark. I've actually been working in the district. This is my 20th year. I've been a supervisor for 10. This is my 11th year being a supervisor in math and computer science. I started with STEM. I was the STEM supervisor for a few years, K through 12. And I went to math, K through 12. And I went to math and technology. Then I was sixth through 12, and now I'm high school only, which is kind of good right now, because that's probably the biggest, the area that needs the most focus, mathematics especially. I'm very happy to be working with my staff, which is unbelievably great. I have hired most of them, but they're really great teachers. They're very diverse. We have teachers that speak Arabic, Spanish, Korean, lots of different languages. So a lot of our students actually have somebody that they can go and speak to and understand their culture in order to be, to acclimate into the school. Right now, my focus really is trying to help MLs. We have a lot of students that have interrupted education. And that being said, it's very hard for them to pass algebra. We just finished writing the curriculum for the intensive mathematics course, which is basically fourth through eighth grade math in one year. So we'll see if that works well, or at least works a little bit, in helping some of these students become successful as they enter algebra. I'm very lucky to work with all of these supervisors and Mrs. Calagrees. It's been really great. I really love the kids that are here in Cliffside. They're probably some of my favorite students. So thank you very much, and thank you for supporting us.
Hi, everybody. Charles Danho, district, K through 12, science, visual performing arts supervisor. Yeah, a lot of moving parts to what I'm doing. There's a lot of equipment, CNC machines, laser printers, 3D printers that I manage. I try to get them around everywhere. Recently, we moved them to, we moved one to the middle school, where I'm involved with the STEM club, with students, trying to get them into the STEM Academy, which Mr. Home manages. I work with Ms. Kolig at the Art Academy. Actually, this year, I really want to concentrate a lot more on the arts and try to get more art performances out there. Last year, we had a teacher art show at the, I forgot what it was called.
The Team. The Team Arts. Burgant County Team.
The old synagogue. And, yeah, part of the environmental club, the STEM club, the rock club. I've been teaching for 24 years. 19 years at Cliffside Park. I've been a supervisor for eight years. Yeah, and just all over the place. I try to be very personal with the students, the teachers, and talk to them one-on-one, you know, help them out as best I can, as I can, get them the supplies they need, and leave them, you know, better enrollments and stuff like that. A lot of our electives this year, we have real-world engineering, which I'm happy about. That's supposed to combine physics with construction, so there's components of electrical and plumbing that I'm working with. And we have obviously a lot of art electives, and we'll be working on some others. Thank you.
Thank you, supervisors, for the introduction. It's much appreciated. At this time, do we have any committee reports that I'd like to share? Okay. I guess at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Alfano.
Thank you, Mr. Reifis. No committee reports. You want us to head to, you want to engage the agenda?
Sure, yeah, just a couple of things.
And then I'll engage my component.
Okay. So if you look at page two, there is one individual that I did want to point out, Esther Lee. Esther Lee is in a new role this year at school five, and she's doing a tremendous job. She's part of our preschool expansion. She is our preschool instructional coach and also early interventionist over at school five. We had a state site visit two weeks ago that went very well. They provided us with a lot of constructive criticism, but we're also very pleased in seeing the direction and how the program was running. We're hoping to expand this program in the future by adding more classrooms, more teachers to service some of our three- and four-year-olds in district. And a big thank you goes out to the hard work of Mrs. Martinotti, kind of showing the teachers how, you know, how to do it well, how to, you know, put your best foot forward and your professionalism and, you know, flexibility with an ever-changing program is always appreciated. So thank you for that. And then if you turn to page nine, you take a look at policy number 37. It talks about the school nursing services plan. A big thank you to our school nurses who met last month at one of our in-service days to become compliant with state regulations and policies regarding screenings and making sure that our data and our numbers are present, they are available. So a big thank you to all of the nurses across the district for getting together and completing that form. And last but not least, I guess, is policy and procedure number 39. Just reminding parents that we will be having an early dismissal before the Thanksgiving break. In addition to the early dismissal, we also have a few days off in November. We have Election Day, which is November 4th, as well as the 6th and the 7th for the NJEA convention. So just mark that on your calendars and make sure that you're not sending your kids to school on those days. And you will, if you do check your email, you will see an email from myself today, if not today, sometime tomorrow, talking about our adaptive field tests that are going to be happening in our schools in the next few weeks. So any students who are in grades four through 11 will be taking state-mandated field tests in preparation for the NJSLA spring assessment that we'll be taking sometime in May. Okay? And I think that does it for me, Mr. Alfano.
A couple of items, Mr. Reifis, in regard to finance. Really, three tranches of business happening in the business office right now. We're closing the 24-25 school year. We received our findings and our surplus. The good news is we only had two findings. For a school our size, it's job well done. I'd like to thank the business office, the board's support, obviously all the school's support, and all the staff's support. We really couldn't do it without you. It's a collaborative, collaborative dynamic. We have our surplus now, and we've just engaged our Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting today in regard to how to best allocate our surplus. We'll bring it up to the full board in regard to the major projects that we want to engage with our architect and assess. We are also in doing our, what they'll call it, ASSA reports and our DR TRS reports. That is this year reports. That's our enrollment reports, and our transportation reports. These reports are extremely important, because they piggyback on state aid. So all this data that we provide, the state and the county, piggybacks on our transportation and our enrollment aid, the state aid that we get each and every year. Extremely important reports, and the business office is leading those reports. And as I stated, we are working on, believe it or not, our 26-27 budget. We've engaged the Buildings and Grounds Committee. We will be engaging the board and the Finance Committee in regard to the projects that we want to move forward with in regard to assessment and how to best use our surplus. So essentially, there's three things going on. Closing 24-25, engaging the 25-26 school year, and then engaging the future, which is the 26-27 school year. There's a couple of resolutions I'd like to have folks take a look at, is on page 16, which is resolution number 56. These are CUSAC requirements. Each October and each May, we must do multiple bus evacuation drills. And you can see on page 16 that we've engaged on three of them. We will engage bus evacuation drills again in May. We really do them throughout the year. We not only do them in our district, we do them out of district schools also. And Mr. Luciano heads up that, does a nice job on that. Page 22, which is resolution 74. If I can find the page. Okay. We are engaging in security vestibules, sometimes known as mantraps, in our schools four and six. And we also will be engaging our other schools, also three, five, and the high school. Leaf Plut Services is going to be doing the configuration and the wiring, and all the supplies are currently in-house. And one last item is on page 26. We call it our CMP. That's our comprehensive maintenance plan. That's essentially everything that we need to keep the lights on in the school. We have to submit this maintenance plan to the state and to the county. And it's the major items, your boilers, your roofs, anything major, again, to keep the lights on and keep the building safe and have the ability to keep, get a CO. We have to submit this each year to the state and the county, and that's worth submitting here. It's called CMP, comprehensive maintenance plan, and we'll be approving that.
We started the grant at school number four, Nicole started that off, and it's really, really grown, really across the district. So right now, we're at school four, school three, school five, and now school six. So the purpose of the grant really is to not only support our students in self-contained classrooms and other specialized programs, but also to strengthen our general education classrooms. So it's not just focusing on best practices for special education, but also how do we make sure that our tier-one instruction for all of our students is the best that it could be, so that all of our students can be successful, and so that we can have more of our students in participating alongside their grade-level peers. So last year was my first year as a supervisor in this district. Prior to that, I was a special education teacher for Mr. Varnett at school number six, and I'm very proud of the work that I've done in my role. Now, last year was primarily working with the special education classrooms and the teachers, and this year it's really all the way K to eight. And so I'm primarily, if you'll see me, I'll probably be at school six and school four and the middle school building, but we really work together to support all of our schools across the district. So I thank you all for your investment in us, as well as in our students, and we know that a lot of what we do can't be possible without your support, so thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Charlie Van Hooch. I grew up in Cliffside, graduated at the high school, came back as a wrestling coach at first, seemed like a very long time of coaching. Nine years ago, came to the high school as a teacher of social studies and special ed teacher, I was also a head wrestling coach. Last year, became supervisor of social studies and special ed. This year, my role changed a little bit, I am supervisor of social studies, special ed, attendant at the high school, and whatever else you need to do. Thank you.
Hello, Josie Bella, also born and raised in Cliffside Park. I work primarily with grades five through eight. I oversee the middle school ELA department, but as an instructional supervisor, I get to go into every building and work with all of our principals, support and work alongside all of our staff. Within the last few years, I've taken on a primary role with Renaissance, the educational ecosystem that you've heard some about, and you will hear more about tonight.
That's Joel's best friend.
Alban. I will say, it is already strengthening our ability to make data-informed decisions, and we are just in the beginning of our rollout. So with that, Cliffside Park is personal to me, always has been, and I appreciate the opportunity to be part of this team.
Hi, everyone, I'm Annette Froelich. This is currently my third year serving as supervisor, district supervisor for business education, career, technology education, and world language. Just as a little bit of background, I've been in education for 23 years, 20 years as a classroom teacher, 13 years here at Cliffside. Over the past two years, I've taken on additional responsibilities, overseeing the academies at the high school, and also the seminar classes at the high school. My work also includes coordinating the SEAL of Literacy Testing and organizing student-centered activities such as the Academy Team Building Day that we had this week. And today, we had the annual club fair at the high school, where we had over 20 clubs come out and promote themselves, and it was really a great time for the students. And I look forward to continuing my support for the staff and for the students. Thank you.
Hi, everybody, good evening. I'm Joshua Farah. I'm in my first couple of months as a supervisor in K-3, not in social studies this year. First, I wanted to thank everybody here for being supportive of me and dealing with my bombardment of questions, especially my first few weeks, and I'm just very grateful to put this position and just do what I can, put my experience in the classroom to work, and hopefully, it's going to help to benefit the students of our district. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Margarita Clark. I've actually been working in the district, this is my 20th year. I've been a supervisor for 10, this is my 11th year being a supervisor in math and computer science. I started with STEM, I was the STEM supervisor for a few years, K through 12, then I went to math, K through 12, then I went to math and technology, then I was 6 through 12, and now I'm high school only, which is kind of good right now, because that's probably the biggest area that needs the most focus, mathematics especially. I'm very happy to be working with my staff, which is unbelievably great. I have hired most of them, but they're really great teachers. They're very diverse, we have teachers that speak Arabic, Spanish, Korean, lots of different languages, so a lot of our students actually have somebody that they can go and speak to and understand their culture in order to acclimate into the school. Right now, my focus really is trying to help MLs. We have a lot of students that have interrupted education, and that being said, it's very hard for them to pass algebra. I just finished writing the curriculum for the intensive mathematics course, which is basically 4th through 8th grade math in one year. So we'll see if that works well, or at least works a little bit, in helping some of these students become successful as they enter algebra. Very lucky to work with all of these supervisors, and Mrs. Calabrese, it's been really great. I really love the kids that are here in Cliffside, they're probably some of my favorite students. So thank you very much, and thank you for supporting us.
Hi, everybody, Charles Danho, district, K through 12, science, visual and performing arts supervisor. Yeah, a lot of moving parts to what I'm doing, there's a lot of equipment, CNC machines, laser printers, 3D printers that I manage. I try to get them around everywhere, recently we moved one to the middle school, where I'm involved with the STEM club, with students, trying to get them into the STEM Academy, which Mr. Home manages. I work with Ms. Cole Lake, the Art Academy. Actually, this year, I really want to concentrate a lot more on the arts and try to get more art performances out there. Last year, we had a teacher art show at the, I forgot what it was called.
Team.
The Team.
Burgin County Team.
The old synagogue. And yeah, part of the environmental club, the STEM club, the rock club. I've been teaching for 24 years, 19 years at Cliffside Park, I've been a supervisor for eight years, yeah, and just all over the place. I try to be very personal with the students, the teachers, and talk to them one-on-one, you know, help them out as best I can, get them the supplies they need, and leave them, you know, better enrollments and stuff like that. A lot of electives this year, we have real-world engineering, which I'm happy about, that's supposed to combine physics with construction, so there's components of electrical and plumbing that I'm working with, and we have obviously a lot of art electives, and we'll be working on some others. Thank you.
Thank you supervisors for the introduction, it's much appreciated. At this time, do we have any committee reports that we'd like to share? I guess at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Alfano.
Thank you, Mr. Reinfeld. No committee reports. You want to engage the agenda?
Sure, yeah, just a couple of things.
And then I'll engage my component.
Okay. So if you look at page two, there is one individual that I did want to point out, Esther Lee. Esther Lee is in a new role this year at school five, and she's doing a tremendous job. She's part of our preschool expansion. She is our preschool instructional coach and also early interventionist over at school five. We had a state site visit two weeks ago that went very well. They provided us with a lot of constructive criticism, but we're also very pleased in seeing the direction and how the program was running. We're hoping to expand this program in the future by adding more classrooms, more teachers to service some of our three- and four-year-olds in district. And a big thank you goes out to the hard work of Mrs. Martinotti, kind of showing the teachers how to do it well, how to, you know, put your best foot forward, and your professionalism, and flexibility with an ever-changing program is always appreciated, so thank you for that. And then if you turn to page nine, you take a look at policy number 37, it talks about the school nursing services plan. A big thank you to our school nurses who met last month at one of our in-service days to become compliant with state regulations and policies regarding screenings and making sure that our data and our numbers are present, they are available. So a big thank you to all of the nurses across the district for getting together and completing that form. And last but not least, I guess, is policy and procedure number 39. Just reminding parents that we will be having an early dismissal before the Thanksgiving break. In addition to the early dismissal, we also have a few days off in November. We have Election Day, which is November 4th, as well as the 6th and the 7th for the NJEA convention. So just mark that on your calendars and make sure that you're not sending your kids to school on those days. And you will, if you do check your email, you will see an email from myself today, if not today, sometime tomorrow, talking about our adaptive field tests that are going to be happening in our schools in the next few weeks. So any students who are in grades four through 11 will be taking state-mandated field tests in preparation for the NJSLA spring assessment that we'll be taking sometime in May. Okay? And I think that does it for me, Mr. Alfano.
A couple of items, Mr. Reinfeld, in regard to finance, really three tranches of business happening in the business office right now. We're closing the 24-25 school year. We received our findings and our surplus. The good news, we only had two findings. For a school our size, it's job well done, I'd like to thank the business office, the board's support, obviously all the school's support, and all the staff's support. We really couldn't do it without you, it's a collaborative dynamic. We have our surplus now, and we've just engaged our Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting today in regard to how to best allocate our surplus. We'll bring it up to the full board in regard to the major projects that we want to engage with our architect and assess. We are also in doing our, what they'll call it, ASSA reports and our DRTRS reports, that is this year reports, that's our enrollment reports, and our transportation reports. These reports are extremely important, of course, they piggyback on state aid. So all these data that we provide, the state and the county piggybacks on our transportation and our enrollment aid, the state aid that we get each and every year. Extremely important reports, and the business office is leading those reports. And as I stated, we are working on, believe it or not, our 26-27 budget. We've engaged the Buildings and Grounds Committee, we'll be engaging the board and the Finance Committee in regard to the projects that we want to move forward with in regard to assessment and how to best use our surplus. So essentially, there's three things going on, closing 24-25, engaging the 25-26 school year, and then engaging the future, which is the 26-27 school year. There's a couple of resolutions I'd like to have folks take a look at, is on page 16, which is resolution number 56. These are Q-SAC requirements. Each October and each May, we must do multiple bus evacuation drills, and you can see on page 16 that we've engaged on three of them. We will engage bus evacuation drills again in May. We really do them throughout the year, we not only do them in our district, we do them at district schools also. And Mr. Luciano heads up that, does a nice job on that. Page 22, which is resolution 74. If I can find the page, okay. We are engaging in security vestibules, sometimes known as mantraps, in our schools four and six, and we also will be engaging our other schools also, three, five, and the high school. Elite Plut Services is going to be doing the configuration and the wiring, and all the supplies are currently in-house. And one last item is on page 26, we call it our CMP, that's our comprehensive maintenance plan. That's essentially everything that we need to keep the lights on in the school. We have to submit this maintenance plan to the state and to the county, and it's the major items, your boilers, your roofs, anything major, again, to keep the lights on and keep the building safe and have the ability to get a CO. We have to submit this each year to the state and the county, and that's worth submitting here. It's called CMP, comprehensive maintenance plan, and we'll be approving that this evening. Mr. Reinfeld, that's pretty much it on the finance side.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Alfano. I guess at this time, I'd like to see if Mrs. Calabrese has anything before we...
I think you stole my show.
Okay. We covered a lot tonight.
Yeah, with the exception to November 30th, we did have a district in-service, and with the supervisors all being here, you know, I cannot thank you enough for the time and dedication that you put into that day with our staff, you know, along with our principals being here, you know, in front of the Board of Education. I do want to say that this is an amazing administrative team, you know, headed obviously by, you know, Mr. Reinfeld, but, you know, to work with these people on a day-to-day basis, you know, they just gave you a synopsis of what they do. They really, really do so much more than what they just actually shared. That was just like smoke and mirrors. If you follow them, like, there's some of them that you don't even know where they are on a daily basis. It's like, you know, they're here, they're there, they're all over the place, and I really, really want to thank you, especially for what you did on September 30th with our staff. You know, I really think that you made a difference on September 30th, for that full day in service, you know, with our students, and I really want to thank you.
All right, thank you. So I guess this is the moment we've all been waiting for with Mr. Alban's NJSLA presentation.
Mr. Alban? Yes. Mr. Reinfeld, I just need to take a vote on the agenda.
Oh, yes, sure, Mr. Alfano.
I need to take a vote on the agenda. Everybody here? Did Lieutenant Lee?
Oh, he's here.
Oh, he's there, okay, very good. Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia, I need a second.
A second.
That was Mr. Rancourt. Okay, we are now going to vote to accept the agenda. Mrs. Abreu?
Yes.
Mrs. Fredo?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Nidru?
Yes.
Mr. Rancourt?
Yes.
Mr. Terbaccia?
Yes.
Okay, six votes, six yeses, so moved.
All right.
Can I ask, is Mr. Sebastian here, Dave? Any questions from the public? No questions from the public? Okay. Mr. Alban? Yes.